Very public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Took a motion to the approval of the agenda. Make a motion to approve the agenda. Move the second and eight for discussion. Here now, say aye.
Aye.
Both sides on motion.
Rich, morning. Not much today, the guys are waiting, but they are going to be working on four eightieth, that those twin pipe there. Everybody's, they came in, we're probably gonna do that today and hopefully tomorrow will be done, so it'll be a short closure there, but get that one fixed and then move on to the next ones.
It's just gravel, right?
Yeah, it doesn't gravel and there's, you know, it's a pretty long stretch in between there, but I think looks like the crops on the west side are brought in, just have stuff inside, but I, doesn't look like they're gonna, whatever, it shouldn't take us but a couple of days, so we're not gonna run it anything, so we'll close that off here later on today, while they tear up the old stuff, the news already laying there, so the plans are turned in for brush from three ninetieth north to five, so they'll be in review, and then Thursday I have a title six review, that's that that nice extra responsibility I got for receiving federal aid, it's the EEO or whatever. My guess is they're gonna have to require somebody to also be an ADA compliance officer too. They'll ask that question, I don't know what the answer is or anything, so I'll leave it alone for now. That's all I've got for you this morning. I think we did put our ad out for a mechanic the last week, or it will go out this week.
Somebody else looking for a mechanic and they were. Norseman or somebody like that.
That could be, yeah, they're, I don't know where everybody's at, but for a bunch of people, it's gonna be competitive, you know, I don't know. Don't know what we'll do.
No, well, try it too.
Yeah, you might have to do some changes, so anyway, that's all I've got for you this morning.
Okay. All right, guys, you got anything else?
Okay. We also have the hot seat.
Right, drainage. My standpoint, I guess.
You want to stand for it.
Second, for the discussion. Discussion on resolution regarding construction in drainage districts and utility, that's from my sack.
Yeah, and then if you guys wanted to let me know what you wanna put in, especially for the drainage engineer. I don't know if you go to Baltimore Lake or what, I, I did send an email to see if that was something that they've been asked to do yet. And this isn't necessary.
Study, isn't it, that they want, that they're going after, is that what you're doing?
No.
Oh, okay.
That.
Resolution. Gotcha, yeah.
This is where they, if you put in like a pipeline, like connectivity lines, right, and mills.
This was what we were talking about.
If there's anything that they mess up there, this kind of locks them into going in and having to fix it.
Which at this point, we've been doing agreements every time.
Right.
Yeah, I don't know if this would just set you up so you don't have to do that, I don't know.
The way he explained it, just gave you a little more protection up front, I think, when he was here.
That's what I thought, too.
So there's just some spots.
Is it gonna affect ready fuels any as far as what's been done so far?
Those have to permit like, anybody else would.
It doesn't stop anything.
Right, just means you gotta go through this process.
Sets a minimum price for any crossing. Um, yeah, to be able to repair and, and just, it protects our infrastructure, so.
And then they gotta pay the bill on it, that's where I wrote it to, up to, like seven fifty and it could be more depending on what we decide.
Yeah. Yep, so.
Yeah, the only thing I don't know about is a licensed drainage engineer, who do you use?
Well, we always use Baltimore Lake for most projects, I mean, it's.
Yeah, if they're willing to do it, which I'm sure they would be, and it only would happen if.
If we were doing.
Come through and they gotta come through and just inspector or make sure all those crossings are repaired, so.
They've got information on most of our drainage districts now, we've been using them to reclassify, we've been using to.
Know who would pay the fee.
Yeah.
Well, the fee is, if you're red in there, you can charge the company that's applying the fee back again.
Yeah, so we can recoup our costs.
We can recoup our costs that way within the resolution, which we probably would have done anyway, just somewhere.
Yeah, but I just said, a drainage agreement, some sort of list just covers everything, so.
And then if you look through that green, and see if you're okay with all that, do not check with, I'll follow up with John and see what he says.
What does that tell you, question, filling in the blank spot was Baltimore Lake?
Well, and then there was, there was more legal stuff.
Yeah, I saw the green stuff.
Yeah, if you wanted to go over that with Jeff or not, I, I don't know.
He seemed to be okay with it, didn't he? That's what his email said.
Were we supposed to name, if, if the drainage engineer couldn't do it, he could. Oh, you supposed to name another one there, so?
Another drainage engineer?
We don't go very deep on that.
Yeah. I guess we named that, we name a licensed drainage engineer.
We should be.
That doesn't work out, then we figure something out at the time.
Well, they got like a, more than a dozen people working on this, and Jacob's been doing a lot, but now since John's moved out, so. Funny help to, I think, to cover us.
It'd be safe if they're, if they're wanting to do it, then put them in and the rest appeared to be all right as far as I could tell.
You have the drainage claims for us to sign, for the state courts. Sorry. All right, okay. Yeah, yeah, good chance to, regular points.
Yeah, Washington.
Do your second. Second, for the discussion. Your non-also fair to say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign. Motion.
Before.
Motion to approve reports.
Second.
Second.
For the discussion.
Yeah, and then the last one, it's on the back.
Okay.
There was one in the middle.
I didn't know that was just part of a figure.
No, that's, there was monthly and quarterly.
All right, payroll, I will develop these.
No.
Liquor license.
No.
E twenty-eight agreement, and we're put meals on wheels incorporated.
This is another one of our, yeah, two more left now, for organizations that we need agreements for Rob's hand.
Oh, yeah.
So I just have two of those, so Jim can have one back.
Okay, they won't, same, okay, gotcha.
Cause I, I didn't know that the senior center and meals program are two separate things, so, yeah, yeah, who knew?
Never guessed that either, but I almost should approve the twenty-eight agreement with, towards of meals and wheels.
Is there a second, I'll second. Level of the second and eight for the discussion, hearing all's in favor, say aye. Both same sign, motion, okay. All right, the project funding request letter, evaluation procedure for determining soil wetness during construction of underground utilities to minimize excessive soil compaction in farms, so.
Everybody must have agreed with the survey, so now they want six hundred bucks out of the county.
You want all the counties to kick in six hundred dollars to do this evaluation.
Iowa states. Yeah.
I have no problem with giving them six hundred dollars for soil compaction for our farmers. I don't want them out there at the wrong time of the year.
What's that? Yes, for a study to see, to figure it out, and so, yeah.
To figure out the best practices, basically.
When to be in there and when not to be in there.
Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion, for the county to kick in six hundred dollars like it earlier coming.
For a study, okay, is there a second?
Yeah, second.
Okay, it's been moving second, for a discussion. Hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion. Memorandum of agreement between the Iowa Department of Transportation and Worth County.
This one is from treasurer's office.
Oh, that was it.
Yeah. I think I sent that out to you.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on driver's license.
Yeah, it was Jake, all right, was that I'm assuming?
I'm assuming. I just got it on my desk.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think it was.
Well, yeah, that was, we don't have a choice, we have to provide the services, pay for everything.
Handoff license in Worth County, we are go on with this.
So there's a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Agreement, is there a second?
I'll say aye.
Move to second, if any further discussion, hearing none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion. Right.
Decide to buy.
Cost advisory service, FY twenty-two central service cost allocation.
Pretty sure I sent you the report.
You did.
So this is just.
The agreement.
Yeah, the knowledge or the, the agreement for it, certification for it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Quick motion.
Motion to approve the cost advisory services, cost allocation.
Second, second, it's been moved in second, for the discussion. None all's in favor, say aye. Both same sign. Motion.
They get us money back, so.
Never turn that out.
Does it apply to the twenty-three, twenty-four year, or do you actually get a refund from DHS?
I don't know.
Okay. I just seen that we got, we were getting a refund from DHS.
Yeah, that comes through. All, all your land. Yeah.
You do it accordingly.
Hopefully.
Hopefully.
You know, it's, get things back to do a little attention, I can tell you that. They do when they want. Okay, Jeff.
Fair, so I'm not sitting behind Venus. So I have the zoning commission report on a review of the proposed October twenty-two amendment, October twenty-twenty-two amendment to Worth County Urban Renewal Plan and Worth County Consolidated Urban Renewal Area. The zoning commission met on September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two percent to a request by the Board of Supervisors to review a proposed set of amendments to the current Worth County Urban Renewal Plan and Consolidated Urban Renewal Area. The review is required per Iowa Code four three point five to determine if the proposed changes are consistent with the county comprehensive plan. The zoning commission met, reviewed and discussed each proposed change, followed by a vote on each proposed change. For the proposed projects, there were three, the first one was demolition and construction of a new Worth County courthouse. The finding of the commission was that it was not consistent with the county comprehensive development plan. The commission voted unanimously that the project would not be consistent on the grounds that the essence of the county comprehensive development plan, as evidenced by its stated goals, is to carefully manage economic development in the county through commercial and industrial development in the county, consistent with the goals of ensuring high quality of life. Commission found that the proposed project was not in direct support of economic development in these goals. Further, that repairs, renovation or replacement of defective government buildings was a natural and normal maintenance function that should be managed on an ongoing basis as part of the general budgeting and administrative management. Additionally, it was observed that the known maintenance issues surrounding the courthouse and other government facilities was a subject of a comprehensive study in twenty-twenty-one and set of alternatives to address the issues, and the commission was not aware of a final decision having been made to demolish and replace the current courthouse. This would imply that approving such a plan would be premature to the decision process for determining which alternative best serves the public interest. The recommendation by the commission was that the project not be part of an amended urban renewal plan due to the inconsistency with the county comprehensive development plan. Further, that the supervisors embark on a public process to determine the final decisions on the best approach to determine the ongoing maintenance issues. Second project, bridge, road and culvert improvements. The commission found that they were not consistent with the county comprehensive development plan. The commission voted unanimously that the projects listed in the proposal would not be consistent on the grounds that the county comprehensive development plan places an emphasis on targeting commercial and industrial economic development to occur along federal and state highways in the county, while the list appeared to include a random collection of roads scattered across the county. It was observed that targeting development along state and federal highways would also require certain key county level roads to be necessary to access those state and federal highways, and the list included five such possible road projects. It was found that such key, key county level roads are already in existence. The commission found that a preponderance of the proposed projects were not related to main supporting roads, and that as a whole, the projects were simply a matter of routine maintenance that's required of any road bridge or culvert, and not in direct support of any particular known new commercial, industrial or agricultural project. In short, projects appeared to consist solely of natural and normal maintenance functions that should be managed on an ongoing basis as part of the general budgeting and administrative management. The recommendation from the commission is that the projects not be part of an amended urban renewal plan due to the inconsistency with the county comprehensive development plan. Rather, that the county continue a long-term plan of routine maintenance to manage routine repairs and general upgrades. Ready fuel Iowa pipeline from Hamlet Town to Manley Terminal. The commission found that was consistent with the county comprehensive development plan. The commission voted unanimously that the project appeared to be consistent on the presumption that the route of the project would predominantly be along the public right of way of state highway nine, and the county comprehensive development plan places an emphasis targeting commercial and industrial economic development to occur along federal and state highways in the county. The county comprehensive development plan further includes a stated strategy to allow the placement of pipelines through the county, provided they in part serve the county and pose no safety hazards to residences. The commission also made the observation that providing credit support for private development should be viewed with significant caution, particularly when a prior project, Xenia Water, resulted in unforeseen challenges and cost to the county. It was commented there may be other alternatives to encouraging or assisting this pipeline project. The recommendation from the commission is that more details of the project, especially a confirmed route and documented economic results expected for the county be published and presented to the public for consideration during the planned public hearing on the amendment to the urban renewal plan. For the proposed new urban renewal areas, the first one proposed was all right of ways for all roads and bridges in the county. The commission found this was not consistent with the county comprehensive development plan. The commission voted unanimously that addition of all roads and bridge right of ways in the county to be designated as part of the urban renewal area in the county was not consistent with the comprehensive development plan. Doing so would not only be an abuse of the intent of urban renewal, it was inconsistent with the stated goals of the plan to focus economic development to state and federal highways. It was recommended that the urban renewal area not be expanded to include the right of ways for all roads, bridges and culverts, unless there are specific new major development projects which dictate new assets of this nature or require a significant upgrade beyond normal maintenance activities in order to support such new project. The third area that was proposed to be added to the urban, or second area to be added to the urban renewal area was the land supporting the county courthouse. The commission found that was not consistent with the comprehensive development plan. The commission voted unanimously that addition of the land which supports the county courthouse to be designated as part of the urban renewal area in the county was not consistent with the development plan. The current and proposed use of land is solely in support of government function and not economic development by any definition. The comprehensive development plan makes clear that the provision and maintenance of public facilities and services are intended to meet the needs of current and future public, it is not an economic development activity and therefore does not meet the criteria. The recommendation that the urban renewal area not be expanded to include the land supporting the county courthouse. Area number three was certain new wind turbines from the Freeborn Wind Project. The commission found that was consistent with the county comprehensive development plan. The commission voted in split vote with one abstention that addition of the new wind turbines to the exclusion of the land on which they set to be designated as part of the urban renewal area in the county was consistent with the county comprehensive development plan. While it was observed, there appeared to be a conflict between taking this action and plain reading of Iowa Code four oh three regarding the nature and purpose of urban renewal and criteria for inclusion, and that structures such as wind turbines seem to be outside the term of this, the scope of the term area. That was not within the purview of our, our review, it was acknowledged that precedent had been set in the county having added prior turbines to urban renewal plans, albeit inclusive of land at the time. The recommendations by the commission was that the urban renewal area may be expanded to include the new turbines as listed in the proposal. The commission added a final comment saying it was noteworthy that the land which is to be used in support of the project for the Ready Fuels Iowa project was found consistent with the county comprehensive development plan, that that land was not included in the proposed amendments to the urban renewal area. It was suggested that the supervisors evaluate the attributes of doing so, if not having performed that evaluation already. So that was kind of jumbled up, but in short, it was just a, a question of the land that the pipeline is on was not part of the urban renewal area. The commission was kind of odd that the land was, was not.
The land that ready.
The land that the pipeline is gonna use, that they're gonna build on, yeah.
That was probably right away.
Yeah, that's going county road right of way.
Yeah.
That's why we went after all of the right of way roads, or it's because there's, there's some language in there that says contiguous, so.
Yeah, it was just a question of, it, it would seem that if we're adding land to the urban renewal area and that project is an urban renewal project, that the land would be enrolled into the urban renewal area.
Yeah, the land of the pipeline's gonna be, yeah, that's the entire road right of way, that's why we're doing, we wanna do the road right of way because it's actually gonna come in county road right of way, it won't come down highway, right? It'll actually jog around and, and get up to three hundred and eighty street and then come all the way across to three.
Yeah, but you, you, but you, you don't intend to enroll that area, the land into the urban renewal area?
The road, the road right of way. Yeah, we do.
Okay, cause that's not in it right now.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, yeah, all, to put in all the road right of way, that's, that's because of that. It's, it's for those bridge and culvert projects and the pipeline as well, to go in that road right of way, cause we'd have to make that. Or put that in a plan, yeah, we get it from Hamlet Town to.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that they, because you had wanted to enroll every road right of way in the county that that would encompass.
That would, yes.
Yeah, yeah, and the commission, and again, it's your guys' call, the commission, does our review and report.
Yeah. But yeah, that is, that is included, and the easiest way was to.
Do it all.
Do it all. As far as our attorney's recommendation from, from the void, so. But yeah, that would include that route of the.
Yeah, it would include everything.
Yes, yeah, yes.
Questions?
Questions.
No, appreciate the work you guys put into it, you, everybody's comments and concerns.
Take a motion to accept the report. Only the motion, accept the report.
Well, second.
Second, any further discussion, hearing all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, motion, okay, thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
Summit fork, public request for hearing with the EPC, all panel is here. Hey Jim, I guess you're up? No, you're the only one on the agenda, you and Paul are the only ones on the.
Basically, all I wanted to say was that you've spent a million and three quarters on the development south of the casino. And will this hog house affect the, the sale of the lots up there, I mean, it's been hard to move any lots up there, cause everything's still open, isn't it? So the county's got a big, big stake in this also, and that's what I wanted to just bring up. And Edith couldn't be here today, but.
She's on Zoom, I guess, I mean, she's not on the agenda.
No, and she asked me to read this letter, if not, we can give you.
You wanna read it, Jim, that's fine.
Not a very good reader.
I ain't either, but I get stuck doing it, so.
To the Board of Supervisors, my name is Edith Haynes, resident rural Iowa. And I'd be presenting my comments to you in person, but I have asked it to be read because I am ill and cannot make the meeting. Very briefly, I would like to add my support and endorsement to the comments that have gone before. I'm asking you to appeal the permit to the EPC on behalf of the residents of Worth County. Either Bruce Rassider or Jeff Brackey are residents of Worth County. As a board of supervisor, your job is to protect our rights, resources and the citizens of Worth County as defined by law, requesting appeal would allow you to uphold your duties as elected officials. It would also give the residents of Worth County an opportunity to protect our county's values and resources. To not request an appeal would seem to be a derelict, the duty of your comments to the citizens of Worth County. I support the request for the appeal to the EPC, and it is that is prepared for by the Iowa Administrative Code, chapter sixty-five point one zero point seven. Please enter this statement in the public record sincerely. And if this confinement system goes through, as of yet, I have not been assessed, the newest, new assessment hasn't been over to my place. But I have a feeling that within a five mile radius, if this site does go up, or taxes should be able to be reduced because the loss of value, because such a close place. Like I said, one point seven five million out at the casino, you should be able to protect that and ask for an appeal, thank you.
Paul's still not here. He wasn't. I didn't see him. You're actually listed on there too, is anything you wanted to comment, some important, me here, just here for.
Listed as because of the project.
Yeah.
I don't have any specific updates, talk to the number of folks after the last meeting.
So there's fourteen days or whatever it was, or was there a limit on, or appeal time?
It's, the permit probably got issued either Friday or today, it was probably the likely day. So it'd be fourteen days.
After.
As soon as that the DNR could issue.
So whenever we get that, then we'll, you know.
Then we have fourteen days.
And you can't act on it today, cause it's not an action item anyway.
Gotcha.
We have to be put on for next Monday.
We don't have the paper from the DNR to state, we cannot deal with that, so.
What you did, okay, you did already approve it, the master matrix.
No.
You didn't approve.
We agreed to the scoring of the master matrix.
Okay, that's what I mean, agreed to the scoring of the.
Motion basically died because it was a tie, as far as directly, but otherwise, we, we agreed to the scoring with one, you know, except it goes on well, well water, which is still, that's the legal limit unfortunately, but you know, that's what it is.
And that's the only comment or.
That was the only comment.
When we read from the agenda standpoint on the matrix, and then lying in some of the letters we received is that was actually denied, but it was, and it was a tie vote.
Correct.
And the reason that you guys didn't answer the well water one, was because you're gonna have a well there closed.
I think it was answered, it's, it's a hundred, it's. I think it was answered. It's it's a hundred, it's it's illegal, it's legal where it's at, correct? I mean, I think it was a.
You didn't add extra points, that's.
No, it was in there for scoring.
But they didn't use that one.
No, it's used, isn't it? For the total score.
Yeah, the taking additional points.
Yeah.
From adding additional distance to well. I'd have to look in the, if you have the matrix score there, you know.
I looked last night and it wasn't.
Yeah, so what it's saying is we didn't take points.
You didn't take extra points for that.
So you could have took it.
Yeah. You had something the county would would, you know, if that's something that you'd like us to consider, right? That's, you certainly can't.
More than met the score.
Yeah, we exceeded the met the points, and we'd rather have the well placed where it's planned rather than out in the middle of, you know, into this crop field and we're applications.
The only thing that caught my eye was that well, and then the other thing that caught my eye in there is you have an opportunity to do, to do testing on the well water. Yeah, and you didn't do that one.
Um, I mean, everybody has the opportunity to test well water.
Every so long.
Yeah, I mean, but as far as putting that in a requirement in the permit.
Just testing their well water or surrounding.
No, I thought it was just you. I thought it was just yours.
It just.
That's just yours, you'd need to test your well water every so often.
Because you can actually get your well water tested through public health every year.
That's exactly right, and that's already concerned, our thought and response.
That was the only thing I noticed on there that they didn't do.
Yes.
That I thought you probably would do is test your well water every so often.
Yeah, but just because we're, it's not in the permit as a requirement, doesn't mean we won't do it. Right, so just because, um, for example, our minimum setback to well is a hundred feet.
Yeah.
You know, we didn't take points to exceed two hundred feet, but our well will be well over a hundred feet from the facility. You know, so it just comes back to like. Tree plan, the requirement for tree plan and the permit is two rows, doesn't mean we won't plant or, you know, two sides, doesn't mean we won't plant three sides, right? So it's, it's how the permits were done.
You're doing west and north right now.
In the permit. Yep, and we plan on east. And we also landscape along the road as well, or on the roadside of the site.
That's correct. Yeah.
No, I just, yeah.
So I think.
Yeah.
And then I went through again last night.
Yeah, yeah, and I just had some questions.
Okay.
We will. I appreciate that. Yeah, once we get the. Not acknowledged or the letter from the D N R, then it gets put on the agenda and decide if that's where we want to go, right?
Yep.
That seems to be the process.
I never been to.
I'd say it's all new to me, so.
It's all new to me.
Feel free to call us any questions too.
Okay. All right, now what's on there?
Thanks for, sorry. Let me stick that down. Thanks for rescheduling and coming at one o'clock today for the exact board meeting. We had a groundbreaking over in Winnebago County.
Okay.
And then I just got the phone with Bernie, and they are submitting their full application to for the High Quality Jobs Program, A J. We're both listed as the contact for the county.
Anything else?
I don't think so.
See you one o'clock. Chris, Department Eds, Sheriff.
I just got an email that Fisher Brothers will be here today doing all four generators, so they'll be on back in case we have a little work in the courthouse.
Anybody else? Okay.
Mark says he'll be gone Wednesday through Friday to the Iowa Homeland Security Conference.
Thank you, sent that email to. Thanks, Mark. Right, sir, for laser weekly.
I didn't have anything.
Oh, I had three, three more meetings last week. We were in Grafton on Monday, Manley on Tuesday, and Joyce on Wednesday. So we got four of them done last week. Lot of good discussion, lot of good questions. Of course, the western side of the county is is concerned. They they really like their services over there with Lake Mills and Forest City. You know, and we're not a hundred percent sure yet what we're going to do. RFPs are out there. These these services got to come to us and and explain to us the best service they can provide us, so. Um, you know, I think some people are worried that we're just gonna eliminate the need for Forest City and Lake Mills, and that's not the case. I mean, we have to, we have to kind of go through and score these, I guess, and see which one the committee thinks is going to be the best for the county. And of course, all this is tentative to vote, so. But there has been some really, really good conversation. Sheriff and I have made every meeting, so it's, so we're giving them all the info we can, and and just hopefully they continue to support.
First you do that, it's it's up to the public, you know.
Yeah.
Do, and this is just the first step, I think, and that's.
Yeah.
Screen taxation is still the first step, and then after that, we got to figure out how we're going to put it all together.
Yeah, right, could you speak up, please?
So, anyway, yeah.
So, yeah, so we've got those done. And we've got three more this week, Hamlet Town Fertile and Northwood, so. We get that out of the way, and then we need to get the following week, so. Then we kind of just wait for election time, I guess, to see what happens, because basically, if it doesn't go through in the election, RFPs are nullified and and we'll have to start a different process or something, so. But that's all I had.
Thank you. I had nothing last week, so. Anything else in these going to order business? No.
That I can think of.
Take a motion to adjourn.
We'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, second.
Second, I lost favor said I. Full same motion, okay, thank you, guys.